Here we go. Good evening. I will open the April 10 Newton Planning Board Public Hearing and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your patience. Okay. First item on our agenda is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for an accessory apartment at One Heath Street. Submitted by Joseph Rudolph and Colette Ferendi. And I don't know who wants to come up and speak to the application. Up at the podium, please.
Yeah, we're looking to get a accessory apartment for my brother's use. He's going to be moving over there from where his present location is now on Patriot Drive. And we're looking to extend the building 12 by 14 feet connected to the existing living room that's there now and with a couple of steps get up into their living room. That would be the access area. The total upon it comes to less than the required square footage. So we meet those requirements there. Our offsets are all more than what's needed for the construction. We will, we're talking to engineering, construction, I believe. People that they did a leach field for this property in, I think, 97. Or maybe it was earlier than that, I'm not sure. But it's been done, so they really just need to revise what's there and then we would have that requirement. So that's kind of what we're trying to do here.
If I'm understanding your drawing, you have an addition piece, that addition that connects this existing house to this L-shaped.
Uh huh.
All right. Are these two buildings right now, where on here it says existing shed, are those two buildings connected already or is that another little connection?
That will connect right there. Yeah, they have it wrong on that thing. They're connected. They've always been connected. They were connected when we bought the place, but we fixed it all up.
So it's connected like your drawing?
Yeah.
Not this little, okay.
No. I don't know when that plan was done, but it's, no, we didn't.
At least via the roofline, they are connected, the L-shaped accessory structure. So if it's connected to the main house, then it would meet the connection requirements.
Okay.
You have a plan that you gave us for the septic things on it. The septic, the septic work has been done 15, 20 years ago.
Right, right. It was, I guess they did it for an addition they did on that property. I believe it was the living room. Maybe they added on and they had to do that work at that time, I think.
Do you have something, anything from the health inspector to say that your existing septic will support this existing four-bedroom house plus this accessory apartment?
There are no, there is no existing septic design for, there's nothing on file for what's there right now. But it's, I've uncovered it myself and there's, you know, there's a D-box and pipes coming out of it and we cleaned it all up and it seems to be working fine, you know.
Ms. Radley?
So if any condition of approval you should tie to ensuring that there's adequate septic before a building permit can be issued, an occupancy permit. But if the, if there's no record of when the septic system was put in or what the capacity is, then they will actually have to have a septic designer go in and state that there is the ability to put in a septic system that can adequately support the property if the existing system were to fail. If it's over 20 years old, which it doesn't sound as though it meets that threshold, if it's, if it were to fail, then they would have to replace it. And that's the reason they require the design to ensure that the site has the capacity to be able to put in an adequately sized septic system.
So they don't need an adequately sized septic system, they only need a design that the property can support one?
Yeah, that's usually how it is in most towns. They want something on file in case the thing fails.
Right.
Yeah, that was the problem.
Which makes sense, you know, makes sense.
Well, the recent accessory apartment application was that there, the property could not house a larger septic system.
I was just under the impression that the system in the ground had to be adequate to support it, but if you're saying it's not, I'll...
Well, no, you have to have a plan in case what you have failed.
Yeah, yeah, but you don't have to have it physically installed.
If it's less than 20 years old, yes.
If it's less than 20 years old.
Yes.
If it's more than 20 years old, then...
Then...
And we know how old the septic system is.
We don't know how old it is really. It is a modern system because there is pipe installed and a D-box and all that.
So my suggestion would be that you check with DEF to see if they have a septic permit on file that was ever issued through this?
I've checked with, you know, most people in the town here and nobody, nobody seems to know what's there.
No, there's nothing.
The town may not know. It's at least worth a check because if they have the records, then that can tell you at least one way or another.
Yeah, okay.
I see you have 753.25 square feet, which is underneath the allowable 800 square feet.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure if you're, and I see where you have your door to go out and I see you have your door to go into your existing living space. I'm not sure if that qualifies since it's labeled storage and then I don't see any other door that goes from the bedroom into there.
Oh, it'll probably end up being storage or that room will be bigger, one or the other. The room will probably end up being bigger, that living room, that bedroom that's there. And then the access door will come in through that bedroom. We're gonna need a set of steps one way or the other, there's two different elevations there, so.
I have a question. I'm looking for applicant, but on this application number six is a little sparring since the board they require a baseline noise of air holes to be performed before any site development may commence. I don't know if that's left over from something else or...
Your land use application is a catch-all for a wide variety of applications. It doesn't fit accessory apartments particularly well.
Right, yeah, that's just...
But somebody typed, like, typed on there, like, somebody typed it.
No, that's, that's part of the old, this application was used for many different things. So right now, we're, in lieu of having a new type of application...
So what do you put, NA, not ANO?
Right, most of the things that aren't, the things that aren't filled in aren't necessary to this application. So that's just something that would have to do with a different type of application. Sorry.
I can see, I can see what you mean about the fact that there's a door from the existing living room of the old building into the storage of 149.5 feet, but there's no doorway shown into the unit.
Into the storage place.
Yeah.
Right.
That wall between the bedroom and the storage, there needs to be a door there, too.
Yeah, that's, well, that's actually, that wall would probably be opened and that would be one room, basically.
Yeah, I think that's...
That's probably what's gonna end up happening with it.
That would need to be written somewhere.
That could, that can be put in a condition of approval.
Or we'll, or we'll put a door there or whatever we have to do and make it work. I mean, that's really just...
Because it's not your second egress if there's no way to get to that door.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, that's right.
The issue right there.
No, we understand what's gotta, gotta have egress.
Now, the lot has a big horseshoe driveway. Is that all of the parking, off-street parking that there is?
It's not really a horseshoe driveway. It's, that driveway just goes straight now.
Right, goes up to the back of the barn and ends.
Yeah, yeah.
So is that adequate parking for the, both units?
Right, where would this person park?
Should be plenty of parking for off-street.
There's at least off-street parking for four vehicles there.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a big piece of property. It's, you know, we should be able to find someplace adequate to put the driveway.
But normally, the people who are parking by their accessory apartment have their parking by their apartment, not way over here where this other driveway is.
Yeah.
Not necessarily. You don't allow for two driveways. When there's an accessory apartment, you allow for one driveway.
Right now, there's one paved driveway there.
No, but it is, it is something that would require a road cut permit.
What, if they needed a new one?
Right.
If they don't, if they can use the existing one. Okay, so you say that this horseshoe type thing is not what's here there now?
No, that driveway basically goes straight through and the other side goes straight through.
Here?
It goes to the back of the barn, yeah.
And this goes this way?
Yeah.
So there are two driveways?
It's, it's not, it's a utility, you know, it's a utility area to get to the back of the barn, basically. There's only one driveway there that's paved.
I have an aerial photo from 2016 if that might be of help.
That might help.
That, that's not a driveway, it's, well, it's, you know, it's an access...
But it shows the paved driveway is the reason I was gonna...
Right, right. We have a paved driveway and that's, that's our driveway, basically. Everything else is, you know, access onto the property.
So this is the, I would like to see this, Duke.
This is the house.
Yeah.
So the driveway is there, the paved driveway is...
Paved driveway is right there. I can bring that around.
Is that matchup? Okay, so that part of the horseshoe has now turned into a paved driveway and that part is a dirt road.
Right.
Correct.
Turn it the other way.
Turn it which way?
Turn your thing the other way so you have it...
Okay.
So you're looking at the street?
So it lines up.
No, no, not that way. This way.
Yeah.
This way.
Okay, yeah.
I use that to get to the back of the barn.
So that's the paved piece.
Correct.
And that's the dirt road.
Right, okay.
Is that...
All right.
Okay.
Drawings have to be a little bit better or...
The strides.
Did you submit this with the application? Or is this something they found, Doug? Did you submit this with the application?
Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't decide if so, because I saw your drawings in here, too.
That was the closest I could find a plot plan.
Right. So this, this is the old one.
This came from the old septic, right?
So this is existing drywall to be removed. Does that ever remove it or is it still there?
What's that?
It says existing drywall to be removed. Is that still there or did any of this work ever get done?
I don't even know about that. I've never, I've never torn one up. I've never uncovered it nor anything. I don't know about the drywall there, but I suppose we could take it out of there if we have to. If there's one there, I don't know.
The area labeled existing addition was constructed.
That's already there now?
Yes.
So where's this new addition gonna go?
Over here. This little piece.
This little piece is going to...
This little one right here?
This little piece is going to attach this big building to the L shape.
To the, what this plan says is the existing sheds. If the existing sheds are already there, they're gonna, they're gonna connect it to the main house. And that's already there.
So is it an apartment or part of the house?
No, it's part of the house. That is part of the house.
So what's in the existing shed, then?
No, that's not...
That's not there anymore?
No, that thing that says existing shed on here, this is from an old plan.
Yeah.
It's an L-shaped building, like this. And then they're just built, they wanna build the attachment section to attach this L-shaped building to the house.
So what's in the shed now?
The existing shed is this.
It's an apartment.
It's already an apartment?
It's set up as an apartment, correct?
It's, right now, it's a utility area, basically. I've been using it for a, I was using it for an office.
Okay.
And now we have it, somebody's using it as a yoga office. That's what they're supposed to be using it for, but... She has a yoga studio.
I'll have to my other picture. Okay. So this, I'm just trying to match this up. Where does this go? Street, street.
Yeah, there you go.
So what's the new part? This?
No, this is, this is new.
This is new. Why are you calling it storage, then?
Well, that's what we were talking about before.
All right, so that's that. This is that.
Yeah, because there's a whole building from Jennifer's image at the barn that is back here needs to be shown on drawing.
Yeah, I think we might need a little bit clearer drawing that, you know, that shows this L-shaped building as an L-shaped building, the one that's existing, rather than saying, you know, so it...
I think I showed that on the plan, didn't I?
I'm sorry?
I showed that on the plan that I put in, that I submitted. I don't know why you have the other plans, it's...
No, I have, I see this.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, that's...
Right.
That's what we're gonna do. That's what we're trying to do. It's 12 by 14 area.
Okay, so now I have another question.
Whatever the width of that building is, actually. It's just gonna run straight through and...
Yeah, because this presently has a door here.
Actually, a C shape at that point.
No, there's gonna have, there's gonna be a door here in the kitchen.
Correct, but in one of these pictures, there's already a door at the end of this unit.
Where?
Where?
Right there.
Oh, there, that door, yeah, okay. The door at the end of the existing shed.
Is it, right. Oh, it says existing shed and then, is it not connected now to this other existing shed?
It is.
It is.
All of them.
All this is connected now?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't know what that plan is. That plan hasn't existed since, uh...
So there's a door...
For 15 years.
From the living room. You're, you're...
From what would be the living room.
Yeah, we're gonna put a door, we're gonna put a door there.
So the door is here?
Uh, there's a window there now, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, but no, but that's what I'm saying, it's not shown on the plan.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There's an existing window there now that we're gonna make a door.
Okay.
Where that window is on the, on the main house.
Where the door is on the shed.
Right, is that turning into the apartment?
That's gonna be a window.
I was gonna say, that...
Oh, okay.
The one that's in the picture is behind the tree, is that what you're talking about?
The door going into the building will be right here where the window is.
Yeah, right.
And this roofline comes right over and runs underneath this.
Uh huh.
And then it, and then with two or three steps, whatever it is, it'll come down into this, into this area here.
So this...
This is what's gonna be built right here. This is what exists right now.
The steps are gonna be here?
Yes, where the, where the door is.
Yeah, okay.
And then this building here, this is gonna be, I showed it as storage, but I'm gonna probably either open the whole wall up or make a door to the, yeah. I, I, I'd have to let's put it in, that's all.
Well, it has to connect to the main house.
Right.
That whole thing.
Yes.
He has to live in this whole thing.
Right.
Now, when you just said open up the wall, which...
Right here.
I should've showed it, I should've showed it with a door, an archway or whatever.
Oh, okay, so that would be an expansion of the bedroom.
Yeah.
Right, basically, that's basically what it's gonna be.
Okay, so if I have it correctly, right behind this tree, there's an existing door which is coming out.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a window because you can't have a door there because that's the same front side as what's on your house. Okay.
I think that is a window, I think.
It says five by...
No, not on here, but...
It doesn't show it as a door. It doesn't say it's a window, but it, but it's not a door either. It just shows a solid wall, which is...
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna put a window here.
Right, that door's coming out.
And you're gonna remove the door?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what side of the property that is.
Now, is your intent to carry on the front wall of the shed? It was originally a starter house. By the way, in case anybody's interested, the other thing's down. This property used to be Gertrude's Greenhouse.
Oh, did it? Oh.
But were you gonna bring this wall, this shed wall, straight over to the house?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what this is.
Well, I couldn't tell if it steps back or not.
No, see, this is, it does look like steps back a little bit, but...
The way you drew it, it doesn't line up.
If I had to do that for work, I'd starve. I try to include everything I could think of.
Right.
Okay.
Graph paper is wonderful.
I know, I know.
Okay, so this is gonna be a window there?
I just didn't have $15,000 for an engineer, you know? I mean, it's, we're on a shoestring budget with this project here. I'm sure everybody tells you the same thing, but...
So that's going over to carry on there.
Barb, I just have one quick question.
Yes, Ms. Radley.
So I believe everyone who's on the application, so Joseph, Randolph and Colette, all three of you are here.
Yeah.
All three of you are on the deed of One Heath Street. Is at least one person going to live in, just, I'm looking at addresses?
My brother Joe's gonna live there.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure one of the units was gonna be owner occupied.
Right, yeah. No, he had said that in the beginning that he was going to live.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody that was on the deed, at least one of those people was living in.
That's right, because that's one of the, that's one of the stipulations, you're right.
That was one of the, I had originally thought about, but he cleared that up right away.
And there can only be one accessory apartment.
Correct.
And it has to be attached to the house, so that fixes this because this is not attached to the house without putting that additional...
Right, and that's why they're fixing.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to...
And all of the utilities are all gonna be connected together.
All the, it's all shared, yep.
The accessory card says it's a three-bedroom presently and this plan says it's an existing four-bedroom.
This is, this was from an old plan that just gave a basis of knowing where things were on the property.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, okay, so it's a three-bedroom house.
Right.
And then with accessory apartment. Okay. It looks like on your drawing you have an existing porch behind this existing addition.
Yeah.
So you're going to bring that one wall of this area that you call storage right now, it's gonna come even with the outside edge of that existing deck, correct? Okay.
The outside edge of the deck, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's where it ends up, that's where it runs into.
Right. Okay. You have anything?
My only question, and this is just because I, whenever I review accessory apartment applications, I look at the aerial photos because that's, sometimes can give me additional information. My question was just about the activity going on in the back of the lot and what that was.
Well, I parked my truck back there with, and I have my, I have a garage that I work on my equipment, so I can pack all my, put all my tools there.
Okay, is it for a business purpose or just for private use?
For my private use. I don't have anybody, I don't have anybody go there for a business.
Okay.
It's just, it's just me that, I have my, my equipment there with my tools and I go to work, you know? It's not, it's not a business where, you know, somebody comes there and we operate business, you know?
Okay.
I have more than one trucks. Some days I need a big truck, some days I need a small truck and some days I don't need any truck.
Okay.
You're allowed to have several trucks.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
My only question is because of the confusion with the drawings, I see that you're doing a lot of note-taking.
I'm sketching in what I, what I remember of the interior of the house because I grew up in this house.
Did you?
Many years ago.
My sympathies.
I guess my question is, is the application clear enough that we can vote now or do we need it to be redrawn? It's sort of like, do we do conditions now or do we get it sort of straightened out and then do it?
So, well, first of all, you haven't accepted jurisdiction over this, so if you really do feel like you need more information, now's the time to bring that up. If you were to do conditions, my recommendation would be that adequate septic be, adequate proof of septic be provided before a occupancy permit is issued. And that the, that there be at least one interior door connection to the accessory apartment prior to occupancy.
Well, that's according to the ordinance.
That's according to the ordinance anyway.
Well, you need to put that in and, yeah.
But to kick it up just because it's not clear from the drawing, but if that's the only revision that you feel is necessary, I think we clarified that there's gonna be an interior door.
Right, oh yeah, I mean, he's answered all the questions, right? It's just the paperwork doesn't really show it all.
If that's the only condition, it strikes me that you shouldn't require them to submit more information and then come back in two weeks.
I mean, if we, if we have to put a septic system, then we'll do that, obviously, you know what I mean? Whatever, whatever's, you know, required to get the thing okayed. But we're looking to refinance the property, so we need to, you know, before I can even talk to the engineer to have a new set of plans done up, we need to know that this will pass.
Well, to Roger's, like, on this drawing, there's really no information about wells or anything. On this drawing, there's information, but you said it's not accurate or it's not up to date. So to Roger's comment, either this has to have the information or this, which one are we looking at? Because most times...
What does it say the well is?
You know, so...
According to this, the well is over here, however, the prop...
I mean, this says abandoned well.
This is abandoned, the well is on this side of the property.
So see, it doesn't, oh, existing well over here?
Right there, yeah.
Right.
Between the two, I do think that they have provided all of the necessary information, maybe with one exception of the, showing the location of the interior door. maybe with the, one exception of the, showing the location of the interior door. Whether you need it more clear, that, that's for the board to decide.
No, they are, they do show a door right here. Door into, from this, this little part that's labeled storage.
The other side of that wall, there is no indication of...
Here.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's where the door is.
Yeah, I, I showed it as a complete wall.
Right.
Yes, so that's, that's gonna have to be either a doorway, or...
An arch or something.
An archway or something, right there.
Door or doorway, yeah.
It, it can't be a solid wall.
But with that one exception, they seem to have, they show the utilities, they show the parking, they show where the septic, they meet all the setbacks.
Well, the, the parking is hard to see, it, it, the parking shows on your picture better than...
Well, and that's one of the reasons I look at aerial photos, but...
I was just gonna say, your picture filled in a whole bunch of holes that are here.
Yeah.
Because, according to your, the picture you pulled up, there's not a gravel driveway, there's a actual small parking area, right in front of the...
In either case, there's adequate parking for four cars there.
Because how wide that, the paved driveway?
Um, the paved driveway is roughly, um, I think twenty, twenty-five feet.
Okay, and it's, so you, on, on the paved driveway, you can park, it's two cars wide, and at least two cars deep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's not shown on the paperwork, but it already exists on the...
Yeah, the, it makes it very confusing, I...
Yes.
I have sympathy because not everybody can sit down and sketch, and that makes perfect sense. However, it would be nice if it showed the, the actual parameters of the property.
Right.
And, like, where the barn is.
There's your barn right here.
There's two barns on the property.
Oh, no, there's another barn out back.
There's this, this gravel road goes all the way down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, that, none of that is...
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like you've got everything that's necessary, it just, all needs to be...
Tweak a little?
Yeah.
Tweak and put into a single document.
Okay.
You know, quite possibly, the, um, the tax map downstairs might have show the property more clearly defined.
I, I checked, I...
They more than meet all of the building setbacks, if, if that's the concern.
I tried getting, um, a different, you know, another plot plan, I, you know, I did research it, but I, this property's kind of old, and, uh, did that property had, have a living room? Was that living room there when you lived in the hot, property?
The addition?
That, that, that a living room there, that's, that, in the back.
Yeah, what, what they list as being existing addition.
Yeah.
You know, that, the, this was a starter shed, this was a greenhouse. Where it says, uh, existing addition, which is three steps down from the kit, what used to be the kitchen.
Yeah.
That was a storage shed for plant pots.
I see. I see, what, it was all connected when we, we ended up, when we got it. And then we just, we fixed it up. I was using it for an office for a while.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's going over the pre-existing, there was a concrete slab out there.
Yeah. Right now, there is, yeah.
You don't have to do a butter notices on accessory?
Yes, they do.
Oh, we did?
Yep. We did.
Now, I'm assuming that the...
We did? Oh.
The issue of two thousand and seven, when the interior of the house was divided into two apartments, that has been restored to a single-family dwelling.
It's just, it's a, it's a one-family house.
Right.
Say that again?
In two thousand and seven, there was a problem with, with the property, where they had divided the L
Yeah.
as an apartment.
Yeah.
And the rest of the house as being a two-bedroom, basically apartment.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, that, that wing there, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a, that's a bedroom now.
Right, I was just gonna say...
That's a master bedroom, basically.
It's, it's all been reincorporated into a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, that, there's a door, there's a door that goes through.
Yes.
So, my suggestion is that if you don't feel you have enough information, very, very clearly state what you feel is missing. I think you have actually received all of the information you need for this to at least accept jurisdiction. If you still wanna have a clear plan drawn up, you could still do that. But I think those should be your two courses of action, depending on how you feel. Either clearly state what you're looking for, or I'd recommend...
I have no problem taking jurisdiction, however, I, I need it all to be on one sheet in order to make, be able to look at and go, okay, yeah, this does all make sense. And that's strange, because having lived on the property, I know what these buildings are, and it's not quite clicking for me, how it is going to work. Especially since it appears that you have an existing deck that's gonna come over to half of the new addition.
Actually, it just comes over about three feet of it.
Right. That needs, that needs to be sketched out a bit more here.
Well, he's just gonna bring this out to here, he's gonna bring this out to here, so there's gonna be a solid wall at this end of this little portion of the deck.
The addition he's making, four feet of it will be exterior wall.
Okay. Exactly, but it's...
Eight feet of it, it will be attached wall, or common wall with the, with the building.
About eight feet of it, yeah. And then three, two or three feet of it will be past that, that, uh, living room area. And that lines up, that lines up with the L.
See, there's your deck.
I want it to line up with the L, so there's no jogs, any more jogs in it that need to be, you know?
That's what I'm saying, when you have to go from sheet to sheet to sheet, it's hard to approve. But that's just me, somebody else can make a...
Yeah, 'cause that, that, that's sort of where, where I'm at, where the two, it's sort of like, we're, we're gonna have to have either extremely good minutes of the, of all the things he's told us of how, that, that's not on the paper. I mean, everything seems fine.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, we can make it a condition of approval that a single drawing showing everything on one document is required. And that could be a condition of approval. Or we can wait to give the approval until we have that document. It's six of one, half dozen of the yellow.
Well, if, if I have, if, if I know what you want for conditions, then I can go to the bank and tell them, this is what we're doing, and it's been approved, other than these conditions, which we're, which we're doing right now, other than that, we'd have to wait another, over another month now.
Yeah.
We're looking to get an approval head, so I can get, you know, the, so I can go talk to the civil engineer, and get the, the design work done, and, and all that stuff, you know?
Let, let me ask this.
Wait a second.
The, the main portion of the accessory dwelling as a structure already exists. We're talking about an interconnecting area that definitely has to have a interior door to the main house.
Which you chose.
Which it shows. It shows where all of the utilities are, it shows where the well is, it shows adequate driving, or driveway space and parking area, it shows where the septic system is. So, we're not talking about the addition to connect the two, causing any setback issues. It's not going to exceed the square footage by this addition. It does need to have that interior door. Could you make that the condition, and then the building inspector will understand the approval?
Well, he's saying this isn't a septic. That's why, the question, he said this never happened, so...
No, he, he, yeah, either way, we're gonna have to have a condition that he's gonna have to supply us with, before he gets a occupancy permit, a document that says that there is an adequate, the possibility of an adequate septic system.
Yep.
So, who do I get that from?
That, um, so you're, the engineer that I think you're consulting with is Dennis Quinto with Civil Construction. He would be able to be the one that would, um, be able to design a septic system for you?
He, he already has done that.
Then that's proof that an, a septic system can be put in, that's all you would need to give to the building inspector.
Again, that's, that's another piece that we would need to see at some point.
Alright, so, can we, can we write all this down, so that we can, we know what we're doing?
I, 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 I'm, I'm making a list of conditions.
And you would, if they, if we get to that, they'll give you an official, it's a notice of decision is what it's called, and it lists all of the conditions that you would need to meet.
Okay.
Of which it would be the septic, and then making sure that there would be an interior connecting door.
Okay. So, the issue isn't whether the system there is adequate or not, it's whether we have something that's in place that would be adequate? Is that what you're saying?
You need to, your, the engineer needs to show that a replacement system could be installed.
Right, okay.
Correct, if the current system weren't available.
If the current one fails.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's, that's what I'm looking for, then.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've already been talking to him, and, and, he basically, uh, needs to revise that one.
I'll make a motion that we take jurisdiction.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you abstaining?
I do.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and...
Let, let me finish my list.
Don't forget to open a public hearing, I realize there is no public, but...
Oh, sorry, open a public hearing, I did, when we, when I, when we started.
Public comment, sorry.
Okay.
Public.
Then anybody else won't talk.
Is that really necessary, if there's nobody here?
If you, you need, you need to...
If you wanna clearly state that there's no public here to comment on it.
There's no public to hear to comment. Only the applicants.
So, everybody was in favor, so shall we abstain?
Charlie abstained, right.
Okay, so far, I've only got three conditions, and that is that we have corrected drawings combining all the supplied drawings, but reduced to a single drawing. You'd need, for approval, you would need to have an approved septic plan on file with the state, and you'd have to get all...
No, that's not what we did. It's a sep, a septic design that says a replacement septic can be put in. That's not the same thing, is it?
I, I didn't quite hear what Jim said.
Say what you said again.
Right, um, we've, this is the way we've always phrased it, approved septic plan on file with the state.
That means that, that's, that's different.
That is different, that there are adequate sep, proof that there are adequate septic facilities exist.
Right, but we have always required that they actually have the plan.
The replacement's plan, or the...
Exactly.
The replacement plan would be the proof that adequate septic facilities exist, but if it's already on file, then they don't have to do it, seems like it's not, but...
There is one on file, but it was done so long ago, they don't know if it's, it's up to, um, to today's standard codes.
Yeah, if it was over twenty years old, then the, that plan wouldn't be valid.
I think it is over twenty years old.
We talked about a septic designer, uh, um, from a, and septic designer saying a replacement septic system can be put in, right?
Right, he, right, there, there was one that was designed already.
Right, however, that is...
It was so old that they're gonna...
Yeah, we don't, we don't know if it's adequate with the additional...
And it, and it expires after...
Right, exactly.
Right, I mean, one of the reasons for doing that, and we've, we did this with most of them that have come before us, is so that the plan is already on file, so that if it fails, they're...
Right, which means that you're gonna need to go and get a whole septic design done.
Right.
Before you can start building.
And that's one of the documents...
Okay, alright.
That's one of the documents that was submitted to us, was...
It has to be designed, sent to the state, but not built.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be put in, but you need the design saying it can be put in, right?
Right, I've already talked to him, and he, he said he'll, he'll make us a new design up.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's on the back of the, what I was writing on. I mean, he, he already has this, he just actually has to complete it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, that would be the approved septic plan on file with the state, and comply with all local and state permits.
And also, I'd like some kind of a certification that, uh, his brother is gonna move in. You can see that need, that none of the owners currently live there.
So, just make a condition that the owner occupies either the principal or accessory room.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Can I have an addition when you're finished?
The principal apartment, or the...
The principal or accessory.
Occupy.
Yeah, right, yeah, he, he, one of the owners has to occupy one of the units.
One of the units, right.
That's exactly what, the way I phrased it.
And I have something to add to that?
Okay.
Remove the door on the front of the new living room and replace it with a window?
Yeah.
Right, if the plan doesn't show that, that's good.
Actually, I had a question. It appears to be a power connection, I'm not certain if that is a meter.
Here, says, shows, shows electric line right here.
Right.
So, electric line must be going to that.
Right, but, but, accessory apartments cannot have separate meters.
It's not a separate meter, no.
Okay.
Okay, it may just be a connection, yeah. Okay. And you'll need to...
That's the same, he's doing everything, right?
Yes, all, all the utilities, have to share all the utilities, and he, he stated that it did.
Right.
Yeah.
And you'll have to get all required building permits from the building...
Well, that, that's all local and state permits.
Yeah, okay.
These are not in the correct order, because normally, all of the local and state permits ends up last in your template.
So...
But I will give you the sheet.
If you wanted to...
So, anyway...
Go through it all, and, just so we are clear, and, but she'll send you a copy.
Right. I will make a motion that we approve the accessory apartment with the following five conditions. That corrected drawings combining all supplied drawings are, are given to the planning board, that there is an approved septic plan on file with the state, that one of the owners occupy one of the units, that the door on the front of the shed be removed, and that all local and state permits be obtained.
Do I have a second?
Sounds fair to me.
Okay. Let's ask Brooke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright. You're good.
Okay, thank you.
We will send you a copy of the, um, decision with the conditions, and probably, what, Thursday? You can send it to us? Do you have their email?
I have Colette's email.
Okay, she can...
Alright.
She'll, she can email it to you.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
You won't be able to get an occupancy permit until you submit that drawing. That'll be a final approval, once you meet all of those conditions.
Right. And so, what would be good is if, if this outline of the house just shows where the house is, instead of saying all that stuff, and then shows the apartment over here. Okay? That'd be great. Okay.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close this public hearing. Thank you all. Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, next on our agenda is acceptance of the minutes, oh, yeah. Mr. Melvin, are you back?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Alright, acceptance of the minutes of three twenty-seven?
Move to accept.
Second.
Nothing else?
Actually, you can second, and then scroll correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Conan is...
When, when I have something else to say, I usually don't second.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was wondering.
They testing you.
Okay. Rules of procedure. We were going to make a final vote on that. Everything look okay to everybody?
Natalie, can you send me this as an electronic document versus a?
Yeah, I can do it. I sent it to her. I gave it all to her.
Actually, after you gave it to her, last time you had wanted to remove the deciding vote from the regular members section.
Yeah.
It also said that in the alternate. And I had, I asked Gail to delete the word deciding.
Oh, okay.
In the vote section.
Where are you?
On part three, alternate member. Alternate members may participate in meetings, deliberations, and public hearings, but are not entitled to vote. It had said not entitled to a deciding vote.
Oh, okay, all right. So this is correct.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think Barbara, you made all the other changes that we had suggested.
Yeah, and then I did all that and then I sent it to Gail. So now it's hers. It's her baby.
I will make a motion that we adopt the rules of procedure dated 4/10/18.
Do I have a second?
Second. What?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, that's unanimous. Thank you much.
Are you going to sign this at this point or are you ready to talk in the meeting? Remember Jim had asked me to get it?
Oh. Actually, we can sign that.
Yeah, we should sign that. I don't care.
But you want it to look pretty?
Give her back the pen.
Yeah, I was just going to say, make sure Gail gets her pen back at the end of all of this.
She's got to keep minutes.
For the time being, Gail.
Oh, you.
She's okay.
I should have realized we're municipal subdivision, therefore she cannot actually afford more than one pen.
And will you make sure, I think that probably the clerk's office needs a copy of this.
Yes.
So you need to get, right.
I agree with the town.
Yeah, right. And then the selectmen get a copy of that? I don't think they need.
No, but a copy should be put on the website.
Okay.
If we have space.
While they're signing that, do we have any manifests? Okay, I have a NEPRA manifest. Okay. This is, okay. Recording Mylar's mileage, final review of 125 development legal notices and a butter notices in the total of $426.95.
Move to pay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Charlie, I think. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. And operating budget manifest of $9 for postage stamps.
Move to pay.
Second?
Charlie.
I didn't have a chance on that one.
That's right. Jim? Jim and Mr. Melvin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You know, the correspondence we have is just to tell the board that Barbara signed off on the paperwork we got from the State Department of Safety last week of Frank's Auto.
Oh, okay.
She, they got the business permit.
We reviewed it and I called the state. They entitled us into a set of plates. He said that if they were to go, Charlie would know better. They said they went to an auction, picked up a car, they put the plates on there. It's just, what is it, Charlie, do they come in a set?
What's that?
Do they come in a set of plates?
Well, no, he can get one or 100.
Well, the lady told me one then. I wasn't sure if it was one or one set.
Oh, just one set?
Yeah.
No, I had asked her to find out just what that meant.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
That was it for correspondence?
Okay. I have two things. Mr. Zelinski is interested in still being an alternate. He said he was, he misunderstood and thought that the meetings were on Wednesday nights. And he has fire department meetings on Wednesday nights or trainings. So that's why he hadn't been coming. So he would still be interested in being an alternate. And then he said he could make it at least one, one of the Tuesdays during the month. If the board so chooses to nominate him as an alternate.
And just ran out, ran out this year?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. I think they're only good for a year, right?
No, we're doing for three.
Three.
Alternate?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, seeing that we have three open slots, I mean, I think, he hasn't shown up a lot. But seeing that we have extra slots anyway, it might as well put him in.
Okay. Is everybody agreeable with it?
I'm moved that we appoint.
I have no problem.
Okay.
I like it, Ziggy.
Okay, that's good.
Barbara Zelinski for an alternate position for three years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Give it to Roger. Roger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I have one more thing to ask the board. I was wondering if the board would so approve that I could get paid for mileage for when I have to go and sign the occupancy permits. And I'm hoping that if you say yes, it could be retroactive for the first of the year because I've made six trips to Kinsley Drive already and two trips to Puzzling.
Barbara, why wouldn't you anyway? Why shouldn't you anyway? You should be paid.
Because we never voted that I could put in for mileage.
It's no different than us going to a seminar. It's no different than going to a seminar, if we go to a seminar.
I don't know, yeah, I think it is. I think I need. Because I have to sign the occupancy permits.
Why do you sign them there rather than here?
Because they have them there and they have to get the fire department, the road agent and everybody. And they are, they have them there at the site and the people go there and sign. And the building inspector is the last person who signs. But there are certain ones that the planning board has to sign.
Right, but I, I thought, the one year I was chairman, I was signing them here. But that, that depends on the developer and how the papers flowing. I have no problem with that.
I don't have any problem. I believe if you, if you actually have to travel for the position. If you didn't want to travel, you could make them, bring them here. Though quite often it's, yeah, the closing is tomorrow morning at nine. You get this call on Wednesday. Tomorrow it's at nine o'clock.
Right.
I need the offered permit signed now.
I'll make the motion that Barbara gets paid for mileage, retroactive.
It's a January first.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Guess I'm abstaining?
So you're opposed? Not for driving, but I think they should bring him in.
Yeah, it just makes it easier all the way around.
No, I abstained, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
I would actually, I would actually phrase it, the chair, so if the chair changes in the future.
The chair.
Oh, yeah, there you go, that's good.
Talking about spending money, I'm thinking of, probably, I'm probably interested in going to the Planning and Zoning Conference in Concord, the end of the month.
You should register quickly, they're running out of spots.
Yeah, I was just going to say, time's running out to register.
Yeah.
That's $55, right?
It's $55.
$55 in mileage.
And mileage to Concord.
Yeah, that's fine. We've always said, okay.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
In the minutes.
No, it doesn't really need to go in the minutes, but.
Oh, you want me to register you?
Yeah, she should register you so that it could come, you know, get paid from here.
Okay.
Or, well, how fast can we get a check there? That's the problem.
I don't know, I looked, I printed out the thing. And I don't know if you can do this online too, but the printed one says, mail the town an invoice.
Well, exactly, I was just going to say.
Oh, okay.
If Gail does it, they'll mail the town invoice.
Oh, that's good, okay, great.
If Roger does it, he has to have the check.
He gets reimbursed, right. Okay, that's good.
So on April 28th, that's when you talk in the court.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think you have to do it like probably Thursday when you come in.
Yeah, I would do it.
Yeah, I got another reason to see you.
And I'll forward to the, usually you get a confirmation.
Yeah.
Is that the one where the day?
It's Gail.
The New Hampshire Municipal Association has me really upset that they're.
No, this is the Office of Strategic Initiatives.
Law lecture series?
The law lecture series, yeah.
Dumped them all onto one day.
Right.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, you have to do all three in one day. And it's in Concord.
But sometime coming this fall, they used to do it in the fall.
I think it's in July?
July.
No, they're having a different series. It's called like the local technical assistance. It's something different. It's not their law lecture series. And it's not the Office of Strategic Initiatives Planning and Zoning Conference.
Oh, okay.
That's something different, okay.
Yeah, they're doing a, like a local technical assistance workshop that is a full-day thing. I'm not sure when it is, but it's not.
Oh, okay. Well, I was reading in, they said that they were replacing, so.
I don't think it's a replacement. I think it's just a shifting of providing resources.
I enjoy the law lectures.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes they have some really good things.
Especially depends on who's presenting.
Sorry. Okay. Well, I don't have anything else. Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Don't get your hand up too quick. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.